Okay, hello, everybody. We're gonna start this meeting at six oh three going from my phone. Additions and deletions to the agenda.
Um, we don't have the minutes for February fourteenth. I didn't send them to you, so we'll need to delay those.
Okay. Uh, anybody else? Um, one thing I just.
You didn't receive those, Bill?
No, you may have sent them, Abby. I didn't share them with everybody, so they didn't get a chance to read them.
Gotcha. Okay.
Abby, go ahead and resend them to me, because then that will remind me to put them in next month's packet.
You got it. Will do. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Abby and Bill. Um, just the one thing and no action or anything, just I was hoping we could add some sort of discussion about um, our uh, school budget vote to coincide with our town meeting vote. There's nothing on here about that. I just want to be sure we're all on the same page. Does that sound okay?
You could probably take it up under updated approved FY twenty-four budget.
Okay, great. We'll do that then. Um, so I'm gonna say the school meeting. Okay, anybody else? Okay, hearing none. Oh, sorry.
I would say under uh, new business, um, I'll need some guidance on whether you guys, how do you want to approach uh, posting positions?
Okay, um, still wanna make that E?
Uh, could we make it uh, before A or right after A? Let's do it under principal position, because it's the principal position.
Okay, great. So we're gonna make that A two. Um, posting position. Okay, anybody else? Okay, hearing none. Uh, correspondence from anybody? I've had none.
I have not received any.
Okay, let's move on to uh, members of the public.
Um, so just clarified, you wanna do this now, because I know Bill's isn't Bill on, I'm crunched.
He, he is, but I'm just, this is on the agenda. So of course, uh, so members of the public, so I don't know.
Because it's a little long, so I have no problem waiting. It just don't, I know he's gonna jet at seven.
What's it gonna fall under? Do you have any?
I don't know.
Did you, do you have the agenda?
Public correspondence, but I'm fine waiting so that we don't gun up Bill.
Bill, I'm a little unsure what to do here, because I'm not really sure what the, what the title's gonna be, so um.
Well, she, uh, Crystal's a member of the public, so I think I'd, I'd, I'd hear it right now.
Okay, great.
Okay. So, um, we had some correspondence with Beth about a week ago, um, and I was really angry after this correspondence, so I wrote something after the correspondence came through. Um, so I'm just gonna read it.
Okay.
As you know, I supported a merger vote in two thousand nineteen and school closure in twenty twenty-one. I've never come to the school and treated the staff badly or made derogatory comments while at a school event. As a matter of fact, I said closed or open, my kids are okay, or so I thought they were. I've tried to be of assistance with school stuff and purchased items from wish lists. It is unfair to be told by the board chair consistently that we are unappreciative and the reason Mickey is probably leaving. A person who is not a part of the day-to-day stuff and has no idea what goes on here for some families. Although your experience was wonderful and you loved making, not all of us had that experience. Of all the things I have ever complained about as to why I wanted my kids at Townsend, the hell we went through this year, I never would have expected it in a million years. So my question to the board chair is what I should be most appreciative about? Should I appreciate that it took me absolutely losing my crap or my child watching Hocus Pocus on Disney Plus when he cannot read or spell Hocus Pocus to get an evaluation? Should I appreciate that Mickey announced to his class that they could no longer watch movies because a parent was angry they were not doing schoolwork? And Jax knew I was the parent? Should I appreciate that Mickey sent a scathing email out about Oliver kicking a student and that Natalie was so upset she cried? Yet Mickey neglected to tell anyone the student attacked Oliver and the student was brought to Mickey, who should have let Natalie know the students should be kept separated? Should I appreciate that Mickey skipped out on two education plan meetings after this incident due to the friction between us? Should I appreciate that I was called to take Oliver home for refusing to take a test after being told by the superintendent and special ed, he should not be sent home? FYI, I got there a half hour later and Oliver had completed the test, which I am sure takes about twenty minutes to complete. And on the way home, Jackson informed me Mickey's wife is a teacher at a school for bad kids and maybe his brother should go there. Should I appreciate that I was told he was sick of leaving his students to deal with Oliver? Or that he is sick of Oliver doing whatever, whenever he wants? Should I appreciate that he told me he is fed up with the gym teacher who sent Jax to him for a behavior issue, which actually stemmed from Jackson being beaten with pool noodles by two students with five adults in the buildings and nobody had a clue? Should I appreciate that Beth and Abby denied my tuition request, which prompted me to contact the AOE? And their legal department got involved? I am wondering if you can tell me which one of these things I should appreciate most?
Um, I'm not really sure. I'm not, as far as anything that I've, I've said, I'd like you to let me know in um, in writing or in recording where I ever said anything about you. Okay, great. On that email, where I said that you were not appreciative of or of the staff?
You said in an email that my name was on and Aaron's name was on that Mickey is more than likely leaving because he is unappreciated.
Okay, I'd like to see that email. And as far as anything to do with Mickey, I can't, I can't speak to that because I'm not Mickey, so I know you're right. I'm not.
Saying, yeah. You're not here for the day to.
I'm not, but as a board.
I appreciate that you had a wonderful experience. But I have not this year. It has been nothing but hell. And it's not okay for you to assume that we're just always unappreciated because you don't know what we've gone through this year.
And I would equally say to you that it's not fair for you to assume that that's what I'm doing. I'm going as a board member, and I think we've been through this before, board members are responsible for setting the budget policy. Um, I can't decide what a child should do. I'm not a licensed educator. I'm a seven hundred fifty dollar a year paid board member. That's it. So I'm going off of what I'm understanding from the people in the supervisory union. That's it. And I'm sorry if my decision doesn't agree with you, but I just need to go with, I, I can't make that decision, Crystal. I'm not, I'm not an educator. I'm just a board member.
Don't get to decide that we're unappreciated.
Well, I, I, well, and that's fine. And if you wanna send me that information and send it to Bill also, I would, obviously, I would like to see it, but.
Was actually copied on the email.
Okay, and I, but I wasn't. So, Bill, how do we move forward?
So, Chair, Chair, you have, you have allowed for correspondence to be heard. The correspondence has been heard. That is your responsibility. Um, you may move forward.
Okay, anybody else from uh, members of the public? Uh, Sue's here, Aaron, uh, Bridget. Uh, Bridget's a member of the public.
Okay, Sue, Sue, who was there?
Uh, Sue Perry, Aaron Keough, um, Bridget Corby.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to old business, um, updated approved FY twenty-four budget.
So Lori and I just wanted to bring forward this to you because we made some adjustments and you guys have delayed your town meeting. So if you guys had town meeting on March seventh and anything was added after that in the school year, you couldn't have made that adjustment, but because you guys have decided to meet on uh, May twentieth, any changes that are made between January and uh, the now, essentially, we wanted to just update you on that budget. And so Lori is here to just give you those updates.
Great, thank you.
Yes, and also I was asked by the board to provide some other analysis, um, which I've done, and I emailed to you all on the fourteenth, um, hoping you all had a chance to read this. Um, is there's a lot of detail in there, um, but let's just dive right in and start with um, what we're doing here. So first of all, the first thing I did was I took out any of the uh, fund balance that you were adding in to lower the tax rate, just so we could get some good comparisons across the board. We can always, um, you know, if you decide to go to uh, approve the fiscal year twenty-four revised budget, um, well, we can add that back in to bring down that tax rate again. So on the sheet that I sent to you, I'm not sure if anybody, Bill, is that possible for you to bring up?
Um, I am. Uh.
No, okay, never mind. I can do it if I'm in chat, or we can just talk through it. You all should have the, the sheet in front of you.
Yeah, I'll be right back. I'm having a problem on the other Zoom. I gotta leave. I'll be back.
The sheet, okay.
In front of you.
Oh dear.
So Lori, I'm sorry, we're, we're not talking about Russ's questions. This is something separate.
Well, this is, has to do with Russ's questions. It has to do with what you asked me to, as the board, you know.
Okay, I'm just trying to pull up.
Me to put together, I can I can share my screen if I have sharing rights, but I do not.
Sure.
Um, so if Mickey can make me a co-host, I could probably do it.
Hello, where, where would I see that up?
I haven't the slightest idea.
Well, Mickey, do you have the document in front of you that you could just copy for everybody?
Everyone here has it.
Oh, okay. All right, I'll move on then. Um, I apologize for those online that don't have it in front of them if they're not a board member. Um, okay, so.
If you wanted to on Zoom, it looks like the chat is open. Lori, you could put a thing in there, and somebody might be able to just open the document from there.
Um, yeah, we're not, I don't think we're supposed to use the chat, really, so. Um, so column A is the fiscal year twenty-four board approved budget that you had um, back before you decided to move your uh, date and that as it stands, the only thing I changed there was to um, take out the uh, fund balance that was added. So you can see the year-over-year offsetting revenues is sixty thousand. Column B is basically the same budget, exactly the same with the addition of the tuition um, for a, a five oh four student, because you know about this, you can plan for it because your vote isn't until next.
Laura, you've been made a host.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Thanks, Bridget.
Okay, can everybody see my spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so this is where what's highlighted right now. That's what I was just talking about. That is the revised budget. Um, it has the uh, just the additional tuition added to it. So now I was also asked to do some comparison and some projections out a couple of years. So that's what I did, and that's going to be um, the next columns that we go through fairly quickly here. So again, I, I kept the revenue assumptions the same with the exception, as you can see, we go from sixty thousand eight hundred here to twenty-two oh five oh. So in fiscal year twenty-five, um, which is the next budget cycle, this is when the uh, weighting um, study results are put into effect. And it's, there's different weights for different things. One of them is uh, scarcity, um, and so Wyndham does get some credit for that, but what also happens is is that the small schools grant goes away. So it automatically lowers your offsetting revenues there. So corresponding to that in the green down here, you will see that the, the equalized pupils, which are not called equalized pupils anymore, they're gonna be called long-term weighted ADM. Um, this is the, my best guess, and it is a guess. We have had nothing from the state, uh, just one little um, analysis. So I took that and sort of did some calculating on my own. And so you can see that the number increases because of the weights. Um, however, it doesn't increase uh, to offset the loss of the small schools grant in total. Um, I've kept the yield exactly the same and I've kept the CLA exactly the same as what it is now, just to give you um, some clarity there. So you can see in twenty-five, um, this is also, you know, in my email, I also said that column C has, is running the school, a K through six school. Um, it includes healthcare increases, salary increases, and the teacher that is grant funded right now moves into the local budget. So you can see that there's a a twenty-seven thousand dollar um, increase between column um, B here and column C here. Um, and a lot of that increases uh, basically all of your normal increasing. Does anybody have any questions so far? Okay, seeing that.
I have a quick question.
Okay.
Does this make, take into an account um, any changes in um, staff costs? Uh, I'm assuming that there's going to be a new hire for either a teacher or a teaching principal um, and a part-time principal. I'm wondering if that's factored in in some way?
It is not. Um, when I was asked to do this, I was working off the information I had at the time. Um, and you know, it probably will be more of an increase depending on what you do and who you hire. Um, you know, there's health benefit challenges and, and things like that that come along, so I would say this would be the, the bottom of the budget, um, and then the staffing changes would probably uh, increase it from here. If that's helpful. Um, and then in twenty-six, I just did a modest increase of four percent. Um, year-over-year in expenses, just so you can see what's happening, right? So plus per pupil is, you know, goes up and the tax rate goes up three cents from the prior year or four cents from the prior year, and then another five cents in twenty-six. So I was also asked to look at this in terms of what it would mean um, if uh, Wyndham became a tuitioning elementary. So this would not be um, this one has nothing to do with your secondary students. It only has to do with um, pre-K through six. Um, I don't know, Russ?
Yeah, I just wanted to um, reiterate the changes in um, per student cost and the total budgets over a fourteen-year period of time. In um, two thousand ten, fourteen years ago, uh, the average um, um, student cost was eleven thousand two hundred and fifty. And today it's twenty thousand six hundred and forty-one. The total spending in two thousand ten was three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Today it's four hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine. And two years from now, it'll probably be five hundred and seventeen to five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And over that period of time, the average number of students in the school from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty-four averaged over that fourteen-year period is nineteen point two seven, uh, yeah, nineteen point two seven students. So what is consistent is the number of students, but what increases all the time is the cost to educate each student in the total budget. At some point here, things are gonna bust. Somebody's gonna say enough is enough, and I think we need to look at alternatives to operating a school. And if you look at what Lori has done, if you compare column C at a dollar fifty-eight with column G, a dollar fifty-six, if we were tuitioning our students this year, it would cost us a dollar fifty-six versus a dollar fifty-eight. So there is a clear message here that tuitioning students costs less than operating the school. Thank you.
Um, Michael? Oh, sorry, Beth.
No, 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 feel free.
See it, see in the hand, so.
Yep, no, I appreciate it.
Uh, my question is, when yours made, made some assumptions that there's gonna be a four percent increase um, per year, and I noticed that you did that between E and F, and then I'm wondering why between F and G you went, chose to do three point six instead of four percent?
Um, I think it, I just, I honestly don't remember. I probably was, it was a rounding, to be honest with you. I was doing tuition students, so um, I'd have to dig in and see exactly why, Michael.
Okay, I just noticed that um, you said um, for fiscal year twenty-five, column F with a four percent increase in tuition and the other pieces of the budget, which is what I've seen normally. So you're indicating that four percent is approximately is the normal increase, and then it went three point six. So I was just kinda curious how that happens. Then I'm wondering what the numbers would look like if that were four percent. Clearly, it's not gonna affect it hugely, but it just was interesting. Um, and I guess my other comment to the board is that um, I don't believe this is a discussion of whether we should have an operational school or non-operational school. I believe this is a discussion whether you're approving the new revised budget, budget, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, are you looking for an answer to that, Michael? Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, the, the discussion here is the amount of money we're gonna spend on educating the kids. At the school, at the town meeting when we approve the school budget, it's gonna be the budget that's proposed. It's either going to be um, the budget that is in column D or the budget that is in column H. And it's, we're, we're gonna look at the, what the total cost is of educating the kids. And it's clear from looking at the material that um, Lori has presented here, it's gonna cost the taxpayers of Wyndham less money to tuition the students out than it is to keep the school operating. It's a simple fact of mathematics, and I think we need to be able to communicate this information to the voters of Wyndham. It's that simple.
I appreciate that, Russ, but I believe that um, at this point in time, the school is approved to be operational next year. So the budget that's sent to the town meeting is an operational budget. If um, there's a discussion regarding whether the school should be operational or non-operational, that would be a very valid conversation.
There are lots of things that can happen at a town meeting, Michael.
Um, Russ, sorry, real quick, you said something about column H. Did you, was that a?
I'm, I'm trying to reach here. It's the, yeah, the two thousand, the twenty twenty-five school year, column H versus um, column D, which is the twenty twenty-five, comparing those two budgets, and then column C and column G. So if you had a um, tuition plan in place, it would be uh, column G, which would be a tax rate after CLA of two twenty and column C is a tax rate of two twenty-three. So it demonstrates when you shift one student from being in the school to being tuitioned, you save three cents in the tax rate. And the, the differential continues to increase year after year by having a school choice operated school, a non-operational school and tuition the students out.
Well, thank you, Russ. Um, oh, go ahead, Lori. I just have had my hand raised for a while.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I just wanted to clarify to Russ and to the board that the, the letters are different because I added the letters after I printed that or turned this into a PDF. So just to make sure that we're on the same page.
Thank you, Laura, because I'm not looking in each here. So, and the screen here is super tiny, so it's hard to see. Um, Abby, what, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I agree with, we're looking at the budget for this year, and uh, as much as I appreciate uh, the simple mathematics, there's numbers and things that are not gonna be factored in that you don't have, Russ, like grants and things that um, we are working on to get provided for the school. So um, things can change, uh, and hopefully will change. Um, and not to mention that a cost of a couple cents of sending a student to a different school versus other families that want and need to have their children here in town, um, does have some weight and and that you are correct at town meetings, um, lots of things can happen, but um, I think we also know there's some strong voices that, that really want to see and make things work. And there's been a lot of improvement and change thus far, so um, it's seemingly uh, making good progress, and that's something also to pay attention to.
Well, I think that convenience convenience to a family member is secondary to the quality of education that the children are gonna get. And I know that people say it's convenient to have their kids in the school here, but I think you have to look beyond that and look at what it's costing the taxpayers of Wyndham and the quality of education that they can possibly get other places.
Okay, thank you, Russ. Um, I think that's gonna come down to that we've established a budget. Um, so I think we're still focusing on that budget if I'm, if I'm correct. I appreciate Lori, all the work you've done to give us this information to look forward, but I believe that that's what we're still uh, working with, is what we have now.
Yes, so what we're looking for is a motion to approve four hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars for FY twenty-four for Wyndham for your warning for your town, your school district meeting on May twentieth.
Well, don't we need to still figure out the hiring and what our situation is, whether it's going to be a teaching principal or a teacher and part-time principal?
I think Lori pre-answered that by letting you know that regardless of what your structure is gonna be, this could be and more likely is the lower number. Um, it, so it could increase if you guys decide to change. Um, and we can have that discussion after Mick, Mickey's principles report. Um, because uh, previously, um, you guys could offer contracts because you had already approved a budget. You're not gonna approve a budget until May twentieth. And so the superintendent is gonna give you the advice that you have to make a decision as a board of whether you wanna offer contracts before you have an operational budget. Because if you do not pass a budget on May twentieth, you uh, will not be able to rewarn. You uh will not be able to rewarn an additional budget vote until after July first. Of which you will then operate on eighty seven percent of the previous year's budget, not your proposed budget. That will give you access to money, and then it's the board's responsibility to just continually have a vote until you get a budget. Um, so we're gonna have to have that conversation, but I would say for the purposes. Of lowering the number of four seventy eight sixty nine, I do not believe you're gonna be able to get below that. Um, and be able to present it to your voters on May twentieth.
I'm sorry, four seventy, four seven, five, eight, six, nine?
Four seven zero eight.
Four seven zero, great, thank you for that. Four seven zero eight six nine is the proposed budget. Um, can I get a motion on that? I'll make a motion to approve a budget of four seven zero eight six nine um for our May twentieth meeting. Can I get a second? No? Okay.
Well, this is interesting. This is a new.
Very interesting.
So basically, what this means is, okay, Russ, Russ is seconding it.
I I will second the motion.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we owe it to the voters of Wyndham to offer them two choices, the four hundred and seventy or the four hundred and twenty. I think the voters of Wyndham need to know that what 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 is happening when you do a a tuitioning of students out to a. Fully qualified school. And I think they need to know what 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 we're discussing, and I'm disappointed that there's only like nine people at the meeting. I mean, I think we we need to communicate. The idea that, you know, there are other alternatives to educating our students other than in the Wyndham Elementary School. And I think there have been some incidences in the school that have proven that a small school has got its problems. With interactions between students and interactions between students and the teachers as well as parents and the teachers. And I think that's something that, you know, you you need to need to bring this into the community's attention.
Thank you, Russ. Um, I think this is something that's been brought to the community's attention for years, number one. Number two, the fact that there are two. Three parents here tonight. Um, it may suggest that there are some parents who are fine with what's going on, and I'm that's just a. That's just a broad speculation. I'm not. That's uh that's just, that's just me looking at who's here. So I'm not making any judgment, but I'm just trying to go on who's here, okay? Trying to go on here. Russ, I'm on, I'm on right now. Just hold your horses, okay? I get where you're going with this. I got it. You made that clear for years. So. Hold on a second, Sue, if I could just finish, if that's all right. Um, what we're trying to do here is figure out what the people of Wyndham want and the community members of this town have known for years. That this has been what we've been discussing for years, and if you don't like it, you get to vote, and if you like it, you get to vote. Don't shoot the messenger, okay? All right, we're just trying to do our best. That's all we're trying to do. So, any other discussion? Abby, it looks like your hand's up.
Uh, that is still up from last time. I apologize. Put it down.
That's okay, cuz, all right, so the motion on the floor right now, okay? Is an approval of a four. Seven zero eight six nine budget. That's what's on the floor right now. That's what we're discussing. Is there any other discussion?
Can I just say something?
Yeah, absolutely. This is discussion.
Free, I just wanna thank you for all your hard work. Um, a few meetings ago, I got to watch, um, and I wanted to call you and tell you I loved you and you're my hero. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I may not be a parent, but I'm a grandparent.
Okay, thank you. Sue, anybody else wanted to add to this motion?
And I I think at the same time, what Russ is trying to discuss is his role as a board member. On a school board to try to offer all of the information to the town, you know, to do what's best and to let them. Know the possibilities of different avenues of what we could take instead of just saying. This is option A, so I think he's performing his role as a school board member. To, you know, give that information to the town.
Yep, he absolutely is, and that's why we're discussing this motion, and then we're gonna vote on it, and then if it. Whether whichever way it goes, then we'll keep moving forward, cuz that's my job as a school board chair, is to make sure that all people are heard.
I feel a little hostility since you've started talking about this subject, looking at us.
Giving us like saying. No, I'm just trying to reach around here and see. I'm I'm sure you do. I'm sure you do, Aaron. All right, any other discussion on the four seven zero eight six nine? Okay, hearing none. All is in favor, say aye. I'll say aye. All is opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Abby, are you on?
I'm abstaining.
You're gonna abstain. Okay, so then that vote fails is my assumption, right, Bill?
Uh, yes, that is correct. Um, so that vote fails. Uh, Abby, it'll be really important to note it in the minutes. That uh the the budget was presented. The vote uh had a, you know, a um first and a second. And it had three votes, and it did not have a majority. It had a one, one, one. Um, I'll uh reach out to the attorney and find out uh what this means. My guess is, it means that um. You do not have a budget to present to your voters on May twentieth. And therefore you will operate um under eighty seven percent of last year's budget.
Until we come up with the new budget, correct?
Uh, well, you'd have to have a new budget at a warned meeting uh forty days before. Um, May, well, between thirty and forty days has to be warned before May twentieth. So that would be April first to April tenth, I'm thinking.
Um, yes. April first.
Or April, April tenth to April nineteenth. Does that sound about right?
You guys have break on the twenty first?
So you guys have a meet, you could schedule your next meeting for April eleventh, I believe, where. And that would, you could pass a budget then. And uh you could warn it on the twelfth. And the twelfth to the twentieth is within the thirty to forty day timeframe. So Abby is correct. You would have time to do that uh at an April eleventh meeting.
I asked the February twenty eighth meeting was canceled because of weather. When was it rescheduled?
Wasn't.
It wasn't. Okay, cuz your website is down again, and when I go looking for information, then I can't find it.
Is it the school's website or is it the town's website?
I have no idea.
The school, when you bring up board, it says era could not be found. We're updating the website, I can think of.
I mean, Bridge is pretty good about sending out the weekly newsletter. Um.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
I don't know, I don't think this goes to you. I think it goes to Bill. Um. I mean, although I understand Russ's point of. They have to present both budgets, which I a hundred percent agree. You do. Um.
I hope this is one of my children.
I don't. It, now you've had.
Hey.
I, and I abstained. So now you have no budget. And I just wanna point out to Abby and Michael. That.
All right, bye.
Grants aren't gonna help with the staff. So by abstaining on this vote. If this doesn't stand operational school, which you guys are fighting for. You just created a situation where you're gonna be operating at. Eighty seven percent of last year's budget, which was. Set the four fifty three. No. What was last year? I mean, ultimately, it doesn't matter. It just means that. You're gonna be operating at a lot less than this four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um. Literally, that was just a vote to make a warning. To give the voters the information of, here's our proposed budget. But with Mickey leaving, it's ultimately probably gonna be a little more. There's no way it's gonna be less. But here's this other option of a non-operational school. I just want, that's just my viewpoint of what just happened.
Okay. Thank you, Crystal. Um, Michael Pelton, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment um regarding the new budget proposal. Um, when the school board. Discusses the new budget at the April eleventh meeting or whatever it is there. I think it would be interesting to look at, have the figures for the um. New teaching principal slash teacher and or part-time principal. I think that's important to include.
Um, I, Bill, I'm gonna go to you before I go to Russ, cuz he's.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to talk uh kinda operational legally here, so um you just. At a town meeting, you just approve money. You don't approve structure. And you also are allowed to provide whatever information you want. So for example, hypothetically. If the board approved the four seventy eight sixty nine to to bring forward to their voters on May twentieth. And. The bo- and the budget is approved, you have four hundred and seventy thousand dollars to run. The Wyndham School District. Now, if a change in structure also occurred, you'd still have those resources to operate. Whichever structure would be decided by the electorate. But if you do not vote a budget number. Then you would, as Crystal pointed out, you would be operating at a default of eighty seven percent of the prior year. Until a budget is approved. So you can provide as much information as you want to your voters, but. They're only gonna vote on a bottom line number. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but wouldn't it be arguably better to present a budget which is. More transparent with an actual figure that more closely represents the cost. I know that we're looking at a different structure potentially, and that might increase the cost or decrease the cost or however it turns out. But regardless, it should be the most accurate budget. Uh, you know, proposal instead of just the hypothetical, well, this is what we're saying, but we know it's gonna increase, but we don't know how much.
So that would assume, Michael, that you would have decided on who you're gonna hire. You would go out and hire them. You would offer them contracts without an approved budget. So therefore, if. A vote happened to change the structure, you'd still have to pay those people. And you would then still have to tuition students out, so you'd be putting the the risk. Of two full employees and all of their benefits for an entire year. Versus lowering a four seventy to four sixty two. To be more precise on who you hire. And the reason that Lori and I are saying that four seventy appears to be the floor. Because you've changed and looked at everything possible but your employees. And you have employees that are going to. Be different, and you could have employees that could be different employees that could take different benefits. That could have different years of experience, that could have different. Pays, and so. The board will decide what the board wants to do, but I am just saying from the superintendent's point of view. Four seventy eight sixty nine is an unbelievably reasonable number for the board to consider. But if the board disagrees with me, that is fine. It's not my job to tell the board what to do. It's my job to inform the board.
I recognize that, but if you believe or Lori believes that the number is more likely. Let's say I'll pick one out of the hat, but let's say four eighty, because that's what the realistic cost of a new teaching principal is. Then that's the number that should be proposed, not the lesser number because it looks better. It should be transparent, whether you. Think that the number should look nice for the public so that it can get approved or not. It should be the most realistic number possible.
So I'll let Lori say that, but we are not giving you numbers to look nice. We are giving you numbers of evidence, but I'll let Lori speak to that.
Let's let Lori go, and then I see Russ still has his hand up.
Lori, Lori, go first, and then I have a question.
Yeah, no, that's what I said, Lori, and then great, Russ, then you're next. Uh, Laura, I think you're muted.
Okay, um, so. What is known as unanticipated costs happen all the time in budgets across every district. Um, for example, you could have another student move in, a five oh four student um that needs a. You know, additional services in your school, and you would have to provide them. Those are unanticipated costs, and that's what you have some fund balance for. And so by approving a budget of four seventy, you are covering. The structure that you have currently. Um, and unless you're going to change it dramatically, it will cover. The majority of the salary and benefits. Um, and then you may have to spend some fund balance to make up the difference of that. Um, but you don't know who you're going to hire. And you don't know what benefits they're going to take, and you won't probably know that before you have to. Uh, prove a budget and get it before the voters.
Thank you, Laura. Are there any uh questions for Lori just based on that?
I I have a follow-up question after I, that Bill answers a question that I'm gonna ask him.
Okay.
Bill, what do you think is the probability that we can attract a um teaching principal between now and the start of the next school year?
Oh, I think if you post a position like that, you're gonna get uh between three and ten applicants. And then you'll go through a screening process, and you'll go through a hiring process. I don't think you'll have a problem attracting applicants. It will be, uh, are those applicants licensed? Are those applicants able? Are those. Are those applicants what you're looking for? I don't think you'll have a problem getting applicants. I think it'll just be. Uh.
Choosing one.
What, what, yes, exactly.
Yeah, okay, now, um, is it the the custom in the educational industry that if someone is moving? Will say from Virgens or uh New Hartford, Vermont, and wants to be a teaching principal here in Wyndham, that we would be. Uh, paying their moving expenses, et cetera. Is that a tradition in Vermont as it is in Connecticut?
No, that is not a tradition in Vermont.
Okay.
Okay, um, Russ, you're good?
Yeah, that's, you know, I'm, thank you.
Okay, yep, Michael, you have your hand up.
No, I never just never took it down, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay, so, um.
So Beth, let me just repeat.
Yeah.
Uh, as Abby pointed out, on April eleventh, you can approve a budget. And still be within the uh the posting time for warning it for the May twentieth. So if the board wants to discuss this more. Uh, on April eleventh, that is fine.
Okay.
I'm. I I I think that is a important point.
Yeah, no, for sure, and obviously, um, I made the motion, I um. Was for it, so I then would suggest to Russ and to Abby to, um, sorry, Lori, you've been, obviously, we're all incredibly appreciative of. The work that you're doing, uh, Russ and Lori, then you, or Russ and Abby, you need to put uh your questions to Lori. Lori, does that sound fair?
Well, what would the questions be?
I'm not really sure. Um.
Yeah, I I'm, I would like some clarity around that.
That's, and that's why I'm putting it out there now just before so that we're really ready, cuz once April eleventh comes, we need to, we all need to be on board, however we feel. Yeah or nay, we we just need.
I definitely would like to see um the difference in hiring a teacher and a part-time principal.
So Abby, just to clarify, you're talking about right now, we have a teaching principal and we have a. Another teacher, so we have two. Teachers, one of them with the additional responsibility of being a teaching principal. And and you're saying you would like to discuss a structural change to one teacher and a. and a uh less than full-time principal?
Yes.
Okay.
One teacher?
No, no, two teachers and one part-time principal.
That's what I thought.
How is that different than what you're doing now?
Yeah, I guess that's a good point, Bill.
Yes, I'm sorry, just one, just, are you guys? All right, yeah, sure.
Just one thing.
Mm-hmm.
That makes zero sense. Two teachers, a part-time principal, but yet we said to Bridget, no, we are not making you full-time. But now we're gonna add another staff member. I just.
Yeah, I literally just run the meeting. I don't make the decisions. I'm, I'm literally at a complete.
My, my thoughts behind the part-time principal, and again, we're looking into ways to cover expenses to increase uh positions and stuff and stuff through grants. Um, the part-time principal would alleviate any bias involved with a teacher as far as when dealing with any disciplinary acts um for kids, supporting um, you know, the assess expense and things that need to get done. I think that that it's challenging doing the multi-grade teaching as is. Um, and the more people that could be in there at various times and consistently supporting staff and supporting the students, the better. And we can continue to look outside the box at ways to fund that, not through taxpayers. So those are just some thoughts. So I would just, I am curious to 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 see how that would look out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Lori, have your hand up?
I just want to clarify something that you said, Abby, about raising money grants to offset teaching. You you can't necessarily do, it depends on the grant, right? So I just want to be very careful, right? We can't, you can't donate money and things like that to support the the regular operations of a school. So just, just make sure we're on the clear about that.
Correct, and it does depend on the grant.
Yep.
So as there was the Esther Grant, and there's other various grants out there, we are supporting the supervisor union in the hunt for grants that may may not even be eligible for, but being a five oh one C three um may be able to collaborate with um with the supervisor union and potentially even support like the Jamaica School as well with some of the the things that we're looking at. So um, just, I totally agree with you, Lori, and that is a huge piece, but it is a collaborative effort. Thank you.
Can, can I say, say something?
Yep.
I I I think um members of the board should very clearly look at the statutes of the state of Vermont and understand thoroughly how um the education of the students has to be raised through taxes, and there are certain grants that do qualify. But I believe that um the intent is good, but I think the probability of it being effective um is very limited. Um, and I think that um having um more professional educators in an environment that can interact with the students on a regular basis at a larger school has a very positive impact on the net result of the education of the children.
Okay, so Lori has to leave.
Yep.
I will, I can stay for a little bit longer.
Okay.
Um, but any final questions for Lori? I'll stay for a little bit longer.
Uh, Bridget, Lori, Lori Bridget's saying you need to make uh Mickey the host.
I'll set, I stopped sharing.
Okay. Does that look like? Oh, sorry, you need to make Peter the host.
He still is.
Oh, Peter's still.
Yes, I think he was just co-hosting with me.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lori.
Okay, any.
Sorry.
So at this point, there's no, nothing for me, right? Bill, that's what you got from that, too. No direction yet.
I've got no direction for you, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori, for all your hard work.
I'll see you, yep. I will see you on W R E D. Bye-bye.
Thank you. All right, so we.
Day of the week is April.
Beth, ma- Miss Chair?
Yep.
Um, with your permission, could I just get a couple clarifications?
Yep.
Okay, so what I want to clarify is that we had a vote on a budget. It did not pass.
Yes, I have that.
Okay, and um we are gonna warn another budget for April eleventh.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and um you have heard from Lori and I that the current structure is that budget recommends. Correct?
Yep.
Okay, um, so that number's not gonna change, that we're gonna bring you on April eleven.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So, are you still there?
Okay.
I understand what you're saying, Bill.
Okay, okay, good. Um, so my big question to the board is you have a current open position
Mm-hmm.
for a teaching principal.
Yes.
And historically, Wyndham provides contracts to their teaching professionals by April fifteenth.
Yes.
And to their non-licensed professionals by June first.
Okay.
Okay. This year is unique because you are meeting on May twentieth.
Yes.
So my legal brain is saying you're taking a risk when you are gonna offer contracts before you have an approved budget. But you're also taking a risk by not hiring people at the hiring normal window, which is now. But you should be very clear that if you vote on May twentieth, having already replaced the two, the position that your teaching principal.
Yes.
And you offer a contract to the current employee, and you do not pass a budget on May twentieth, you're still obligated to those signed contracts for the next year, no matter what, you end up passing as a budget. I just want everybody to be clear on that.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I need to know from the board is do you want me to post a teaching principal position? Because if you do, and if we create a process and we hire somebody, they will expect a contract prior to May twentieth. So you should not engage in posting and process and hiring if you're not willing to give that contract.
Understood.
May, may I make?
Absolutely.
Make a comment, Bill?
Go for it.
Um, eighty-seven percent of last year's budget is three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. We have approximately eighty-seven thousand dollars worth of surplus um in the bank right now. And if you add that surplus to the three seventy-seven, you get six, four hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-two dollars, which is a little bit less than four seventy. Um, and it is e- enough to have a comfort zone if we don't uh buy down the tax rate by spending the surplus.
Well, and you're, understand that that eighty-seven percent becomes available, but like, your salaries are gonna be paid over the year. You've encumbered them, but you're not actually paying that money out. And the board has to keep voting for a budget until a budget passes. That is the obligation of the board.
Yes, and I I I think from some of my previous experiences, if we were in in get involved in a situation where we were overspending what we had passed a budget for, we could borrow money from a bank like we did Peoples when we had that special education problem.
That is correct.
You needed to borrow money. So there, there are alternatives if we work on how it's going to be handled. Um, I think understanding the budgeting process and what our surplus is and the other choices, I mean, th- there's wiggle room here. We're, we're not in a box that we can't get out of.
No, I would agree with you, Russ. Um, I'm just saying, I just need to be clear that if we are going to post for a principal, teaching principal position, uh, you should be prepared to offer a contract, and you will then be legally obligated to honor that contract.
Yes, I I understand that, and I think, I think what's important is if oh, we have a chance to look at potential candidates over the next month or two, we'll have a a more firm feeling as to whether it's viable or not. I think that it's um, we don't have to off, offer the contract um but until after we've completed two or three interviews. And at that time, we can, we we can discuss it amongst ourselves as what we think we should do.
That, that, that is all possible. That is absolutely correct. So my question to the board is, do you want me to post a teaching principal position for Wyndham Elementary for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year?
Sounds like it. I don't know, Russ, Abby, I mean, Russ, I I kind of feel like I I get what you're saying. Abby?
I'm interested in finding out what it would be like to have to get a teacher and a part-time principal.
Uh, Abby, I don't think you're gonna get a part-time uh principal and and two teachers in in the school and have the budget uh floated four hundred and seventy thousand. You're probably looking at probably an additional thirty to forty thousand dollars if you're gonna be having a part-time um principal um and another teacher. You're gonna have to, you know, to put it well over five hundred thousand dollars of a budget.
Bill, what do you think we should, if if we're talking about potentially looking at people, what do you, what do you, what are your feelings about starting, just just starting out with something?
Well, I mean, you could, I don't know, you could find a compromise and you could uh post the position April first, start collecting uh applications, and uh on April eleventh, um Lori and I can give you what that precise increase would be with two, two average-cost teachers and a part-time principal. And then on the eleventh of April, the board could say, how many applicants did we get for the teaching principal? How's that looking? And how much extra cost is this for this other structure? You could decide on the structure. You could then approve a budget that is based on either two teachers and a part-time principal or
Please.
the current structure. You could do all of that on the eleventh while still posting on April first to collect uh interested parties. I wouldn't want to post it tomorrow, because that's way too long for us not to respond to them. But if you posted it on the first, it would not be abnormal to respond to them on the twelfth or thirteenth, knowing what the structure would be. And I would simply send emails and say, the board has decided not to have that structure. If you just want to be a teacher, we're posting that position.
Okay, and how, just a teaching principal just seems to me like it's pretty um not unique, but somewhat specialized, is that?
You gotta have two licenses.
Right, so I just feel like to post just for a teacher and a principal, I I think we need to be a little bit more creative. So that's my thought. Obviously, Russ and Abby, feel free to to weigh in.
I think what Bill was saying, is it possible to post for a teacher, a teaching principal, and a part-time principal, and see, and then respond depending on what we get?
Yep, yeah.
Applicants as to what structure we're gonna follow.
Yep.
So those different options, I think, are reasonable to take a look at and see what, what it would look like, and what, um, you know, who knows? We won't know unless.
Okay, so what I'm hearing from the board is on April first, I should post an anticipated teacher, an anticipated part-time principal, and an anticipated teaching principal. All three positions. I will title them anticipated because they're not decided yet. We have to be honest with our applicants. And then on the tenth, I mean, do you want me to review those applications and report to the board? This is how many we got?
I would love to be a part of.
The license, or do you want to create a subcommittee to look at those?
The
Go ahead, Russ.
The, the, usually the supervisory union staff or the people that interview the teachers or the, the applicants for the position, the school board doesn't actually go through the interview process. It's usually the supervisory union staff people do the evaluation and make a recommendation to us.
Uh, usually, a, the principal would hire the teachers.
Okay.
So this is a unique situation.
It's a, since it's a principal teacher position, isn't the supervisory union the, the, the body that makes the decision?
Uh, it would be, so because they have a a license, I have to make a recommendation to the board. So it's the superintendent's statutory responsibility to make a recommendation to the board.
Okay.
But any process can get you to that point.
It, it, the Chester Andover Elementary School shares a principal uh with the Cavendish School. And and there, there is a situation where maybe we have a principal within the district that might want to be a part-time principal for Wyndham.
Uh, we do not have any current principals that are angling to be part-time principals.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Russ. Uh, any other questions for the superintendent? Okay, otherwise, I think it it sounds like you're all set with that, Bill.
Okay, so here's what I'm doing. I'm gonna post three positions on April first, all anticipated. I'm gonna collect resumes, and I'm gonna come on April eleventh and say, we'll probably go into executive session, and I will say, I've got this many applicants for these positions. These people have the licenses. And what direction do you want me to go forward, board? And then I will also ask Lori to create a cost differential for two teachers and a part-time principal.
Great. Thank you. Uh, anything else for us and Abby before? We need to let Bill go. Um.
Nope.
Great.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks.
Got it. I will, I will take care of those tasks, and uh, thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, Bill. Uh, principal's report.
Winter benchmark windows now closed, and all winter testing is finished. Results for both classes are very positive and show amazing growth in both math and language arts. These results will also be used to determine areas with weakness to be focused on going forward through the spring. Areas that are low for the whole class result in full-class lessons about those topics. All smaller groups can be made to address specific topics that were low for less students. This spring, the students will take the final benchmark assessment for the Ames Web, as well as taking the brand-new Cognia State Assessment that is replacing the S-PAC. On Tuesday, January thirty-first, our students performed in their winter concert in the multipurpose room. Students showcased their talents by playing recorders, playing ukuleles, and singing a variety of songs. Skill level of our students was amazing to see and hear. A huge thank you to Sally Newton and Kate Almond for donating their time to teach our students and instill a love of music in them. As we have seen with many former graduates, this love of music stays with them throughout high school and beyond. On Monday, March sixth, Miss Natalie and Mr. PJ participated in a full day of professional development. This day was focused on structured literacy and built upon previous learning from the fall professional development days. Structured literacy emphasizes the highly explicit systematic teaching of all components of literacy with, from the foundational skills of phonics to the higher-level skills of essay writing or reading comprehension. We explored the simple view of reading through a case study lens to help us better analyze our students' literacy needs and discovered what it is like to be an at-risk reader in a classroom. Our much-anticipated week of circus residency with Troy Wunderly finished up the day before February vacation. The week was spent with the students learning and practicing a variety of circus skills, ranging from juggling to balancing acts to riding acts, and a host of other unique circus skills. The week culminated in a final performance on that Friday night, where the students were able to showcase their skills and have a highlighted moment if they chose to do so with a given skill or task. Every parent and audience member I spoke with could not say enough about how valuable this week was for the students in terms of their increased confidence and presentation skills. It was such a pleasure for me to be backstage with the students, as it provided me with a perfect view of the overwhelming joy of the audience members. A new large freezer is now installed in the kitchen space to help store food for our students. Thank you to Aaron Kehoe and Kehoe Electric for getting it all hooked up and wired correctly. A new projector has been installed in the upper-grade classroom. The old one finally gave out, and thanks to the I T team, a replacement was found at no cost to the school. Thank you to Greg Frost for helping to remove the old one and installing the new one over break. The new wood flooring has been delivered, and it's acclimating, and the all-purpose room should be installed in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any, so that was your principal's report, and I was looking at principal report out safety follow-up.
Yep, that's Greg Frost, who is here waiting to tell us.
Okay, great. So we're crossing you off A from new business, so you, you're done.
Yep, thanks.
Great, thank you, uh, Greg. Principal report out, safety follow-up. Great, thank you, uh, Greg, principal report out, safety follow-up.
Yeah, I lo-, I love you, Mickey.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, no, uh, it's been a real bear. I've emailed, uh. Rob Evans, oh, I would say at least three or four times. Actually talked to Bill today. Um, we're going to be reaching out to Margolis Healy, kind of going above him. Um, not, not super impressed with the lack of information we've gotten back from him. Our last two, uh, district-wide community safety meetings that we created. Uh, were both snowed out, um. Unfortunately, so our next one is April fourth. Um, I'm looking to probably stick one in the middle. Of the April and May there. Of course, it's hard with April break, but. Something in there, if we even got to go two weeks in a row, we really are trying to push to get the run hide fight. Ready to go and ready to implement for, um, summer and fall and have it be part of new teacher training and, and, uh, have. Some of the trainings with administrators and teachers be part of the, uh. The P D days when, when people return in the fall.
Dynamite. Thank you, Greg.
I, I have a question for Greg.
Sure.
Uh, do you, or actually Beth, you might know this as well. With the, uh, crazy snow that we just got, I know a lot of people were really unhappy to see staff shoveling. The snow piled up on the roof. Um, what is, like, has that been squared away? Does Bridget have a contact of who, who's doing this stuff and? How we can make sure? Um, you know. The school shoveled out and that it's safe for the kiddos?
I think, uh, Bridget, do you want to just real quick speak to that?
Rick actually shoveled the roof, um, was it yesterday morning?
Yeah, one of these.
Yeah, so I, that's, I mean, that's a good board question. Uh, we reached out to him before I actually reached out to him after the snow. I don't know what the previous relationship was with them, if you guys like called them or he just came, but, um. He came and did some shoveling and did the roof, but I don't really know what the relationship is. So is that something that you guys?
We can put that on, let's, can we just put that on the, the next agenda to talk about that? I think this is kind of a, uh. Obviously, I don't want to see staff members on the roof either, so. There was, okay, there were no staff members on the roof. Thank you.
And I'm not trying to zing on them either. I just want to make sure that there's. A good communication bridge so that however that happens, if Bridget needs to make a phone call. Or I think there's some clarification on that process would be really helpful. Um, I have no problem talking about it the next meeting, but I also just want to make sure she's equipped. Um, in case we have any storms between now and then. To make sure that they're communicating and I don't, you know, I don't think there'll be an issue with it getting done, but there might be. Some lag in that or breakdown in that. And if Bridget is able to. Uh, I mean, I don't mean to be delegating that to you, Bridget, but I think, um, if it was a matter of calling somebody, um, or calling. Who, uh, what is the name of the person that does it?
That's Rick White soul, uh, but yeah.
Right, right.
Contact me and, um, yeah, I feel like whoever, whatever you think is best.
I think that, um, Paul has been doing some shoveling. But like little walkways, the town does the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is obviously a huge storm, so.
Right.
You know, we don't have to get into now, but to have a plan for next year.
Yeah.
It seems like when I talked to the son that they had in the past, so I just, I don't know what. Um, you guys have allocated for that or when we can call. So I think that's a good idea to have a plan for it, but yeah, hopefully we're not. Knock on wood, we're not getting three feet of snow. Again.
All right, and I can reach out to Lori and ask her, what is allocated for that? But I, I would say just, yeah, whatever you, you did, you called. Whatever, whatever you think is best, because obviously that needs to go away. And this was kind of a. Significant storm. Um, any other, uh, question, Michael, you looks like you have your hat, hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to say if we get in a pickle like this Saturday when it's supposed to snow eight feet again. Um, just if you could reach out, not really, I'm being a little bit sarcastic, so don't panic. If you get in a pickle in the short term again, just reach out, like. I don't mind coming over and doing a little bit of shoveling. I'm sure I could recruit some folks too. Um, it's important that we get, you know, everything shoveled out in a timely manner and I don't think that we should put it all on Paul or. The teaching staff, I think that's silly too, so. Just feel free to reach out to folks.
Great, dynamite. Thank you, Michael. Um, okay. Any other questions on that? Otherwise, we're going to move on to grants.
Beth, real quick.
Yep.
Um, just for, for knowledge and, and safety sake, ideally. As you guys think about this and, and you totally can do it with volunteers. Um. You should be doing paths to all the, the doorways to the classrooms and the boiler room. Um, when we do things like this, um, obviously this is a. Like just to think about that with the five feet that was out there is probably a daunting thought, but. But in general, um, it, it might even make sense to think about maybe just picking up a, a snow blower or something where then people could come use it. But you really probably should have paths back there, right? If you have heating issues, someone needs to get back there. In case of a fire, those back doors to the classrooms are your emergency exits. Um, and I know that fire, fire code says you're supposed to have a path to those, um.
Absolutely.
Um, yeah, I mean, but I also think it's totally something for the sake of your budget. Concerns to coordinate volunteers with, you know, having people maybe say, hey. You know. This week, well, you know, there's a storm coming. Who is, you know, who's willing to, you know, commit to say, well, we'll check it out and make sure we get, keep it cleared out. Um, but just wanted to put that on your plate, sorry.
No, no, not at all. Uh, Bridget did mention that when she called about having all the, the back doors open and completely around the school and the, and the boiler. So yes, it's definitely. It's on my radar, um, and I will follow up with Lori as far as. Um, what's allocated and then maybe that's something we want to talk about the next, um, putting on our wish list is a, having a snow blower here on hand. Uh, for whoever wants to come and run it. Michael, you have your hand up?
No, I just forgot to put it down again, sorry.
Right, we're going to move on to grants then. Uh, we're getting into seven, uh, twenty.
Uh, we'll be happy with this because Sarah, um, is in class right now. Um, and she has been in communication with Liz, so hopefully with the, uh, next meeting she'll be able to attend and if not. Um. Myself or another member will be, uh, able to provide updates. So.
Great.
There is ongoing conversation for various things. Um, and, uh, hopefully we can see that some of that come to fruition.
Great, thank you, Abby. All right, so we did the principals report, uh, financials, I have. Um, as far as the, when I go to the town office to sign pay orders, some of them are marked with a number, others are not. The ones that are not marked are, um. Uh, just, uh. The, the staff pay. So I have two. Pay orders, one I know is parent number twenty-three. Um, from February thirteenth and one which I'm calling number twenty-one from January tenth. Um, I don't know if you guys are receiving these, but there's, I've gone over them, I've asked Mickey a couple of questions about what's what and. There's nothing that stands out for me. Um.
There's another twenty-nine out there too.
I, that's not at the town office yet. Um, I'm going with what's at the town office and I have twenty through twenty-five at the moment. Two of them being, um, the, the vendors that we have out there, um, and then the others just being regular staff compensation.
So I am still not getting those, Beth. Um, who do I reach out to?
Um, that's going to be to Lori, um, it's either going to be Terry. Um, I need to reach out to Lori to ask why these aren't being numbered the way they used to be. So, um, actually, you know, let me just, let me just do that tomorrow. Let me call Lori. Um, and find out how you can get them. Um, and then just making sure that they're numbered. Um, they're not.
We could have Sue Perry give me her email address. I want to send her some stuff. Um, my email is R P coming. X net net.
You, you want me to give that to Terry?
I think he said Sue Perry.
No, no. No, I didn't mute my mic.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I don't need that. Oh, okay, that was not for me. That was for Sue, you're saying?
Yep.
Oh.
Can you repeat that?
It was a Russell boo-boo.
I don't think it was meant for this meeting. Okay, so if I could just get, um, a motion on, I'm going to just say, let's just go with pay orders, uh. Twenty-one and twenty-three, which are vendors. The others are just, um, staff pay. Um, twenty-one and twenty-three are just Wyndham Central Supervisory, B E Health, Office Supplies, Kehoe Electric. First Fiber Light, uh, First Light Fiber, M and T Bang for. Goldfish and Quaker Chewy Granola Bars. Um. So can I get a motion to approve San Onapla? Can I get a motion to approve just number twenty-one and twenty-three, pay order twenty-one and twenty-three?
So moved.
Can I get a second? I'll second it. All those in favor, oh, sorry, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that passes. All right. Financials is done, the superintendent's gone, so Russ, a few oil sale.
At the select board meeting last night, I brought up the subject of. Selling the one thousand, approximately one thousand gallons that's in the fuel tank behind the school. That's, um, home heating oil to the town. And, uh, they kind of. Said, okay, that they would be willing to buy it. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to find out the capacity of the. Um, the, the town office tank. This, the, um, town garage tank in the meeting house and talk to Coda and Coda. And see if they can arrange to pump the fuel out of our tank. Um, and into those tanks and for which we would get a market price. Of whatever the heating oil value is on the date that it is pumped. Um, and we would cover the cost of the pumping. In other words, we would reduce the, the gain that we would have, let's say it's, uh, four thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, gain from selling it to the town and it costs a hundred dollars to pump it, so we'd get four thousand four hundred instead of four thousand five hundred.
So you're saying it costs about a hundred dollars to pump it?
Well, the last time I talked to Coda and Coda, they said they estimated it would be seventy-five dollars.
Okay, dynamite.
But I mean, it's a matter of, you know, if the board gives me the authority to negotiate with Coda and the three. Fuel tanks in town, we can turn that. A thousand gallons worth of oil into some dollars. If we don't do this, then it's just going to sit in the ground and it ain't going to do anybody any good.
No, that sounds good to me. Thank you, um.
So you need a, you need a motion to authorize me to do it.
I'll, uh, take a motion to authorize Russ to, um, find out the price of, if, or, or moving the fuel oil. From one tank to another. Or do you want a motion? Thank you, um, any discussion? Michael, I'm sorry, do you have your hand up still or do you not?
I do.
Oh, okay, yep.
Um, so just for clarity, the select board did approve the purchase of the fuel from the school.
Nice.
Um, we did not, however, come to an agreement regarding the, um, cost and. Funding of the pumping of the fuel, uh. There's some more discussion that needs to occur regarding that. I think. Um, well, I should say, my personal opinion is that I think that the town should just pick up the, the cost of the pumping of the fuel. Um, because I think it's just silly for the, the school to pick up that cost. Um, but we'll see how that further plays out. We haven't made that decision as a select board. Um, so we'll have to see how that goes. So re, just depending on how your motion proceeds, just be aware that that. Hasn't been determined as of yet, but we did agree to purchase the fuel at market cost, correct?
Okay, that's great, but Russ, you, you said we're talking about seventy-five dollar, a hundred dollar.
It's whatever Coda and Coda is going to charge to pump it out of one tank.
Yeah.
Into the other tanks and that.
Okay.
That has, that has yet to be determined. As to what the cost is going to be. If they're going to pump it into. Two tanks as opposed to three, it'll cost a little bit less, but they told me it would cost approximately seventy-five dollars to pump the tank out.
Okay.
If they want another twenty-five dollars to move it to three other tanks. Then we, we pay them another twenty-five dollars and if we don't, i- if we don't pump it out, the money's going to sit there and not do anybody any good.
Okay, great. Any other, uh, discussion? Because we do have a motion on the table, so we do have to vote on this. So any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of, uh, Russ's proposal of moving the fuel, fuel oil to another tank, uh, please say aye.
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 Hold on, the motion changed. Sorry, it was for him to find out the pricing and come back. But then you just said for him to move the fuel.
No, it was for moving. Sorry, Abby, it was, it was mu-, moving the fuel oil from one tank to another. Um.
To find out the cost of that and come back when he checks the levels and how that would look and talk with Coda.
Wow.
You, you're making it more complicated than it needs to be, Abby. We just, we want to get it out of the tank. It's behind the school and into other tanks. If it costs us a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars, it's what it costs. I mean, what, what's a hundred and fifty? Right now, we're losing four thousand five hundred dollars because it's sitting in the ground. So you gotta get it out and turn it into money. And if it costs us three hundred dollars to do it, then do it. If it costs us four hundred, then do it.
Well, I don't want.
Why?
Four hundred.
And why won't Coda buy, buy it back?
Well, then we'll just, no, if, if you want to talk to Dead River and ask him to pump it out, you can. I already did and they said no way. But Coda and Coda is willing to pump it. So if you'd like to take over this project, I'll move it to your, to your desk. You got it.
But that's not what I'm saying, Russ. I'm just asking some questions. So. It's Dead River that, that won't buy it back? Is that what it is? It's not Coda?
That is correct.
And why, why would they not?
Well, you, maybe you should call Dead River and ask them why they won't buy it. I did and the guy said, we're not interested. They're not interested in buying the fuel back.
Can I just interject real quick here, Russ and Abby? So. Can you just, can you just reiterate how, how we ended up? And I'm, I'm just asking.
So this law was.
Thank you.
Delivered.
By who? Who made the mistake?
That's, that, that's.
That's the.
Remains to be seen. When the tank was switched over to propane, nobody canceled the oil deliveries and the oil still got delivered after it was moved to propane. And it was delivered and now it's just sitting there.
And who would have canceled the order?
I have no idea.
So.
This young lady here would not be, fall on her. No, I wouldn't do that.
No, I don't think so either, um. Okay, so.
I would argue it's not about pointing blame. I think we just have to accept that we have the fuel and I think that it's great that the town wants to buy it. You know, I think that's the right thing to do. Personally.
And I think for seventy-five dollars to a hundred dollars to move it, I just, I kind of feel like we have bigger fish, fish to fry and I'd like to. Potentially just check off one thing off of our list. So, but if, if you guys disagree, we're going to vote and, and then we don't need to.
I think it's a great idea. I'm not trying to say we shouldn't move it. I'm just looking at it as. What is the, you know, wha-, if somebody's not going to pump it, why? We're selling it back to the town. We've technically already bought it. So we're buying it again. Is there potentially a way that we could sell it and not have as a town to buy it again? That's the only thing I'm saying. I'm not, um, I'm not saying not to move it. I'm not saying anything like that. It should get. Uh, removed from there, um, but I'm just curious as to why. It can't go back to a company in one pump.
I think there's just a cost of sending, um, a technician up here, somebody to come up here and just move it, that's all. Um, and I, otherwise we're getting into who should have done what and I, I don't really want to do that. I'd like to just move the oil if we can and, and get that money back. But again, this is everybody's vote. So.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yep.
Um, mind you, I'm not on the board, so my recommendation really doesn't hold. Anyway, but my recommendation is, given that the select board agreed to purchase it, can you as, or would it be possible for you as a board? Just to agree to sell it to the town and then, um. Come to some sort of understanding that there's going to be ongoing discussion on. How and when it's going to be pumped and who's going to pay for it?
Obviously, we, we can. We have a motion.
Yes, we have a motion. Also, and I, the reason why I asked this is I just wanted to have the clarification for the minutes on the motion because it sounded like one thing and then it changed to the other. So I just want to make sure we're clear what the motion is and that the part of, um. You know, people coming back and forth and getting it, that's a, you know, having a tank come to the school. I think it's important to make sure if we are going to do that to the town. That we're figuring out the least amount of times that we're having to do that because it's also could be disruptive to the school. Be having a big tank come and trying to pump stuff and if it's, it's not a gas station, it's a school, so, or fuel station. Um, so those are just points to point out. Again, I'm not against it. I'm just throwing that out there. So the motion on the table is what exactly? What is the wording?
For, uh, the school to sell the fuel to the town. Uh, with a potential cost, Russ, as Russ stated, for about seventy-five to a hundred dollars. with a potential cost, Russ, as Russ stated, for about seventy-five to a hundred dollars just for the pumping. And I think, I think this is, you're saying this is a one-time thing because we switched over, so.
Well, somebody canceled deliveries from Dead River, like, and they don't bring another one.
You know what? I'm going to, that's another thing I'm going to ask Lori. So I have Lori for, for sending out POs to Abby and numbering them. And that's for Terry and for no more fuel snafus. Okay, so we do have a motion on the table that we have to vote on. And that, is there any more discussion? Mike, will you have your hand up? Okay. Okay, all right. All those in favor of the schools selling the town the fuel oil and covering the cost of getting it pumped, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Any extensions? I didn't hear, was that a, okay, it passed. All right, Russ, are you going to take care of that, having it pumped by Coda?
I will arrange it.
Okay.
So just to be clear, you made the motion, Beth, and Russ, you seconded the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so our next meeting is April eleventh, where we will be ready to talk about the budget again. It is, I'm going to look at my, seven thirty-eight, we're going to adjourn. Thank you, everybody.